To people that don't think that we're just providing a strategy and by law, and you thought. So we have all these going on, but it's great. But I would also like to begin by acknowledging that we. I would like to begin by acknowledging that we are in Big Maki, ancestral and see the territory of the Big Maki. Of what we're doing and we have the agenda in front of you and we have no public presentations on our official planning strategy and any by law, they had to be in by what time was it? What did they?
As they were supposed to pre-register technically by Friday, but people always still follow the instructions. So if anybody was here, you would.
Listen to.
Be probably.
Are they done?
But we have nobody online and we did not receive any submissions beyond. There was a written submission circulated to all councilors from John Yor. And then there was one this morning from Emma Larson Yor, I think their name. And those were the only two submissions. And Ward, I think he emailed all the councilors on Friday to say that he wasn't putting something in.
It changes on it.
Um, thank them that he would support that, well, it's currently the board committee. So those, that's the matter of record that we have on this.
Those three that we have heard something from are all in favor of moving ahead with these amendments. Or the amendments that are only those under our road. Exactly, probably affect you know, other areas in future more than what they don't affect our road. Other than the good for that more powers being built in that area. But they will affect there are some people looking at pretty more time for that. Those county, as they go more and more renewable energy. Councilor Brown.
For you, Ward, to say no, nobody from the industry, but you think so. You must be lying. Okay, now I just.
The only complication I had with the industry, which was months ago, was. And that was prior to the recommendation that came forward when it was at the 125 kilometers and the noise. The four decibels, the comment that was made is don't hit us twice, right? If you're putting in a noise standard, it doesn't matter if we're 200 meters away. Although 10 kilometers, we have to meet the noise standard, right? And then when we left the setback at 3 kilometer. We didn't hear anything from them. They were buying with 40 decibels. And I think that was reported to the P H C. And one of the meetings, the industry was buying with the decibels, right?
Oh, thank you. Okay, and I think everybody knows the objective here is trying to have a viable wind industry in this county, which is, you know, for renewable energy, for, I mean, has gas down, but it's also good for economy, for protection here in the valley. But at the same time, we, you know, the whole effort here, you know, was to try to protect residents from whatever negative effects come from the wind power and they started with, well, it's going with it. Unfortunately, for the meeting on our road is, you know, they sent a tenant behind when the app is in their area. And it does affect their quality of life. And so knowing that is our responsibility, I think that is council trying to make it better in the future. When there are more towers go up, trying to protect the residents. And this is seen, I think, by the people on the, by the advisory committee, I think, and others, that the balance. So that's balance we can get and that's what we heard from some of the people that we didn't hear from. You know, John Yor and Councilor, I forget his name. They were both accepting of the fact that this wasn't everything they wanted, but it was perhaps more protection than they have now. Does anybody here want to make any comments on the changes to our strategy and our by law? Go ahead, Councilor.
Just by having nobody here, everybody must be pretty clear as to what we're going to say. Cause it doesn't seem like if they weren't, but let's go ahead. So what are we doing now? Are we, I'm all scared, just wait until the next time.
So.
Read the game.
Yeah, so all this was, was public hearing. So the hearing is just to hear comments and then it'll go to second reading and debate the by law. That's your October.
Okay, so we're beginning, then is there, does it become, you know, legal then or the need on the November?
No, so then from there, it's sent to the province and the province review it to see if there's any statement of provincial interest in it. So the minister has 60 days to review. And then once that review is complete, they send that notification. Basically saying that the minister does not find anything that conflicts with any provincial statement of interest. And then we will advertise the by law again in the paper. And that's when it comes to the official course.
That could, that could be December.
Could be, yeah.
It'll take the full 60 days.
And probably won't because we're not touching one of the six areas of interest for the province, like it's not, it's not dealing with water, housing, infrastructure, agriculture. There's two more, but it's not touching those, so it won't take them the full 60 days to do the review.
Okay. All right, you know, on the road, I think after you go, you go very well, this is where the on the road. Uh, go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you, Warren. I'd just like to say, I advise the many who worked, worked on this quite hard. And, and we wanted to come up with a people balance between residents and the industry. And you know, these elements, but I think what we came up with is better than both parties. And I just hope that we get it right this time because we started this by, I think, first process start that does sets. And I know people are upset and it's unfortunately what happened to the power road. That's how this process, yeah, because all of a sudden one day, 25, they showed up on the power road. That's, that's how we get to this, then we file ourselves. But I just hope that this is the last we had to deal with and that the industry is happy and the residents are happy. I think of the, the decimal, the 40 decibels, it's protection to the residents. Industry will have to make sure that they don't, don't see that. And I just hope that we don't get call, after call, calls in here. You know, once we do the process, the place, I mean, investigated, but you just can't take, can't keep giving the retest to someone's stuff. I'm just hoping for, I hope you put this by law.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Brown, for leading the effort this year, this committee your long time. I know the things, and the rest of the two are not, no, not this town. Go ahead.
I was wondering, you know, the same with 40, it's like whatever. Do we have something that, that we can tell if it's going over that or is, is Councilor Palmer's just saying, oh, my, oh, my, oh, it would be something that sort of shows that that they're staying within that limit or something, kind of monitoring rights or just hoping they just do it on their own.
So the letter to you over, you mentioned, and there are certain parts of all states that are part of it.
Yeah, so the by law structure is, and this is for towers on a go-forward basis, not even that's on the ground today. So anything that's on the ground today is grandfather. So on a go-forward basis, when a tower is established within the first year of operations, if the tower meets certain criteria, they have to actually do a wind energy study to establish what that baseline is. So it's, uh, it's in, the, the onus is put on them to hire the experts, the consultants and per.
Okay, everybody is satisfied with that. We're going to count the D B B, right?
So I missed the notice on the time.
Is he about to, to vote? He's here for the public here. I don't think it's going to come down the line for the vote, but. Who's had, did I say? Go, go ahead. I thought that you were just waiting. Yeah, okay, if there's no further comments, although we can determine the hearing, am I right? Something else we have to cover, okay, and have a lot to do with turn here.
Thanks for the.
Okay, welcome back to the theater. Okay, so now we're ready to our meeting, so. Randy is our, I think, over a year. What did I hang up? Didn't you get it as well? They're in. I got this one, you can't, you're confident. So we're all. This one, you're beautiful. Do we submit it or?
No.
Uh, yeah.
We're sending hammer and drive.
Wait, you can't wait.
Okay.
The media?
I'll be going for the roll.
Let's go for dinner.
Any, for Rita? Does she do?
Right, are you?
Yes, be close to.
I'm here or I'm here?
Uh, on.
I just have a car. I'll, I'll hold on. I called the property service meeting to order and we started off in the beginning with notes that we are in the Big Maki. The ancestral and see the territory of the Big Maki people. Said that, we have approval agenda.
I'm over here.
By people.
Second, it's David.
By Councilor Dave Hart, I was very similar to the same on.
All right.
Yeah, my name, Eric. Next to approval of the minister, obviously in.
Hello.
Second.
By Councilman Kito and second by Councilor Rurado. Those papers have been saying on.
All right.
Got my name, Eric. For four reports, first one up is the building's nature of the port. From. Like Councilor, here.
What's happening?
Second.
I'm Eric.
Councilor Eric. All those papers, second of his name on. Got my name, Eric. Next is the by law, also to report. You play Councilor one. Second, by. Councilor Wallace. Questions? Jimmy, Jimmy Warren, aren't you first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to acknowledge that the property and the bottom broke, which was called almost yellow house. It's abolished and gone and like, what we're saying, and certainly for working on this. It ended up that we didn't have to do it. The owners did it themselves. They brought it to clean up. So if it's publicly balanced, that the residents, the street problems, there's a lot of costs. And that's the same in the essence.
Thank you. Susan, Councilor one.
Yeah, I think we're, we can, I feel the same as me, your idea, everyone open on early. That was only recorded back in early spring and the owners had kept it down, so residents then satisfied with that. I give them a concern with, there's no, still no change on report here. My understanding is something was going to come last week, which I will see in the problem. Here's the ownership's order, chances to come on, probably the one.
Uh, Maris, we do have that paper.
I don't, and I don't get on, I don't see him, I don't know him there yet. Uh, he is.
He's not really like you were before.
There, he is coming because I spoke to him, I think in the last hour, he said, we'll talk later. So we can come back.
I just want to see that we're taking it on.
We'll, we'll come back to the, to your budget, so. Okay. For anybody else that needs a question, Councilor Dave Hart.
I have a question, but a comment. As you're well aware, back when, February, right, April, I consistently voted against you something about officer's report. Because, no, okay, no. One of the problems, I thought it certainly disappeared from the report. So that's the higher level. It's like 90, okay. He's very good at medicate with you. Stayed on top of these two particular ones that I had a certain event. And one of them has been completely demolished and dumped. The other one is significantly dumped. So I'm very pleased with Dan's work and all his work. But that's on the ground.
You, okay. You? Anybody else? Councilor Dor. From what we think we had this last, last month. I think some of our problem was when you got to the legal part of them, is it, it was going from here. So as you're, it wasn't getting down in, in the county aspect. To have these approvals, certainly would take a, I'm hoping, I, I spoke to the minister about that a couple of times. And he's, I mean, you're willing to help. I just wanted to follow up with what the rest of them said. I'm pleased with, with him, so. Thank you very much. Any else? All those papers, same of same night.
Hi.
Got my name, also here. Next is the ordinance report.
I'm over.
Councilor, yours side of the town, the appeal. Questions? Councilor one.
And we just found, you know, I didn't know this ring, we began with our opinion that finish of how we go to school. And they just said this.
Probably, probably on our touch, and after that better order, Barry was there than he, that I was there. And I remember mentioning that, that means that this is something that we should bring back to council, never to work on that. So, yes, I'll, I'll throw you a mention here, show up again.
Yes, I think it's a good suggestion and it was something we, we talked about going, just haven't got to a chat. But certainly you can, to generally can tell you that for the first round, I mean, since the administration took over, we ended the year in the black, I think, yeah. We ended up in the by law by around $75,000 to $78,000. But that's our, that's just the bottom line. I think that we can provide more detail at the, we should be given the details.
So that is, that will be set up, that's our reason.
Any else?
Or, or. Couple of things I want to mention, uh, this is here, we've been working diligently, I guess, on this crisis meltdown now. And there's some really, really serious cases in this county right now that the end get the help they need. And anymore than are pretty serious, but still need the help. So I have been in contact with the new minister of that one out, Brian Comer from Dick Redd. And he has to be meet with the representatives of each discipline unit as soon as possible. Possibly have a district, that of course, two Maloaks. All three of our MLAs are invited, of course, to be there. They're very aware of the situation. So that's one that's very active, working with the other municipalities. The other thing I wanted to do tonight was to thank all the people who helped out with the sponsor that's out of the dirt dog run. I didn't go on that. I was a run, but a lot yesterday and that's the family with me. And pleased to say that the group I have, a top 2000 market, the Jorgos top, 2009. It wasn't like over the top, it wasn't over the top. So it's all for a good cause and it's also hopefully to, not me, it's all the people that contribute to it. And hopefully to help some of the people in our communities, the visiting people every year that appear that are suffer from cancer for her. So many thank you to all the people, staff and the councilors that helped the other. Any else to share?
Dean Prudential? Dean, all those papers, same of same night. Got my name, also here. Next is the rural water event project. That's something in your mind, so here, good detail, nice to see. Ryan, you want to leave us a note?
Um, yeah, the package was sent out on Friday with your package, happy to answer any questions. I did send out a updated report this afternoon by way of email. Which updated the financials, the, um, graphic, or the, R D N, the wireless uh, project. And it changed sort of the, like, change in the overall situation there, the deduction in radio systems. I guess the biggest change was in the software. Change. I have a new version, that's why it's not changed on here. Uh, so there was a change in the software as well, sort of price change in the power system. But the overall effect is that we're projecting that the almost 600,000 under budget. That's despite seeing that they, uh, $700,000 increase in the power costs. And that's just being driven by market conditions for steel and aluminum. So there's a significant change there, but the radio systems, some savings there.
Councilor Sherman.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I don't know if I'm interpreting the map correctly, but, um, if the page seven of 13, there's a map there with the bake ready tractor. And I'm not sure if that is an indication of what ring eight is going to be. Is that the first ring? And if it is, it was under the impression that ring eight is going to go through our economy. That's what it's, it's, we'll come across the causeway as well, that that's what it's having. Has there been a change in that configuration of what ring eight is?
Um, no, so what it's showing here is the, um, the contract of rock contract. So one of the changes that was made is the Abercrombie area has been pulled from the rock contract. And, um, basically will be built by a different contractor.
Still, still, yeah, the ring eight, yeah, because ring eight was supposed to be.
A complete circle, yeah, but because we couldn't come across the causeway, the scope of work changed there. So it is not a complete ring, but the Abercrombie area down to, um, basically, we'll say the North Pole area is still to be completed.
Uh, I have just one more question, if I could, Mr. Chair. On a particular highlights, which is on page three to 13. Maybe you could just explain this to me. It's not really evident what it means to me. Open market carriers have been selected and negotiated. The deal has been made with Mark Rogers for long-term transport services. A fraction of the cost and county is engaging and bringing it through you. What is, what is long-term transport services for knowledge?
So that is your actual data transfer. So it's the actual data that people during your service, residents will have. So that's the inner service, right? They give it, I would give it to.
Well, the Rogers is going to be.
The Rogers are engaged, so they are basically building for us the connections. So from basically here, from Tipta County to Halifax, to the Halifax Internet Exchange, Rogers will provide a 100 gigabit service there for us. So that will give us our needed needs to get out of Tipta County. And then they will build us a redundancy to mount it. Uh, they will build a 100 gigabit service to mount it for us. So they will build the first one in 2021, so that'll be operational hopefully within the next six to eight weeks. And then their 2020 plan is to build the circuit among them. So that gives us our redundancy, the better line up to Halifax. You still have internet because you're going the other direction.
And just a last comment, I guess, so the revenue that's going to be generated in the province is, it's, is in the fourth quarter. Is that our quarter or is that the quarter of the, the calendar year?
So revenues will start to come in in the fourth quarter calendar year.
Calendar, so from here to Christmas time, there should be some revenue start. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, President, this is a good report, it is a good report, it tells a lot more than we can forethink. It tells a lot more than we can forethink. Um, it's mentioned in there of two employees that municipality that hired two employees. Uh, or I don't know what it said, but whatever. We talked before of having somebody in charge of this whole project, uh, you know, hiring someone to, that was basically the job that's being set up. And that is a department, that is who we have a department of it works. So is, is one of those employees, uh, somebody that sort of have overall responsibility for this whole project or or something that people that are handling, but not sure what, what it is or recommendation to hire and when?
Um, so it's a combination. So it is like a resource that's actually taking equipment and things like that. But it's also the, um, what would be kind of the overall, um, person that will oversee, authorize people on the network and things like that. So or the bank and side of that.
Okay. And when would that, uh, be proposed to happen, hiring these people?
Um, the plan for that was that you have these, uh, uh, a month ago with the job restrictions, but they've been working through, uh, various aspects of the project and just making sure that all the gaps are covered off. So between, um, people that will be, um, managing the network or keeping it running on the technical standpoint. So they're just making sure that all the gaps are covered. So that's the network is truly operational. So that's what the delay had been. But, um, I did have a call today with Matt Lemay and I should have everything by the end of this week on that. So.
Will we be advertising then for these people?
That's the intent could see that.
Okay. So these are, these are not some of the top of the, you know, these are individuals that would be employed in this business. Okay. And one more, I'm here. It says in here somewhere, I think, that, you know, the make ratings are pretty well ready, uh, for this part of it, uh, materials are, are bought at, uh, you know, is all the make ratings for rank eight, there was called out page one. You know, in terms of clearing the lines and brushing stuff, they all supposed to be ready now.
So there is one segment that is not done. And that, that is the one state that like the contractor is ready to go, but they basically they don't want to move their crew in, start here, get out and then have to stop. So, uh, the push is to get that segment done, um, in the next, uh, it is supposed to be, it's scheduled for September to have it done. So.
Couldn't possibly be capable to do that now. I mean, you believe it through branches. Okay. I just wanted to, I see how it's saying that it's, uh, ready. A lot of our friends have asked for it. How's one?
Thank you. Just on that particular highlight, uh, page three, it's the current scope of the contract is the, uh, the, you know, freezing down the cost of versus crossing in a can of transport assets. It's going to be a lot of that.
Yeah. So it's basically the strand fibers from the top of Mount, uh, or Central West River, Vituro. Um, at this point, that's kind of just put off to a future phase and take that resource and connect more homes in Pickford County. There's no market right now for people buying fiber or dark fiber. So we would be looking, uh, twenty plus years forward. There's probably eighty for it because there is fiber that is accessible because we're getting it from Rogers, right? So, um, so it's about, uh, basically that fiber redeploying within more households and getting more people connected in twenty twenty-one, which drives your revenues, right? This is a good thing. So the initial thing was, um, five hundred homes. It's probably on the fiber now pushing closer to eight hundred, we'll say in that ballpark, maybe more than that. Um, I think, uh, actually I hit the, the number. Yeah. So here it's the number of households that will actually pass in a couple of separate, uh, so this in phase one is twelve hundred sixty-one that will actually pass with fiber. So the original plan was, uh, we would be basically five hundred, so double that. Um, and basically be able to save the money, um, that would go to Toronto. So to build, to build that link to Toronto was about two point one million. Um, to build that. So redeploying it in here gives you revenue generation. Um, and at some future point, we can decide whether or not we build Toronto or not. But it just makes our business case that much stronger.
And which resources, uh, these two full-time staff in the area were just.
It would be two full-time. At least one of them would be full-time for the resource person will be kind of as it's being built and type thing. So like the equipment that's coming, if anybody would like leave tonight, send through the class there, that room over there is all the equipment now, right? So, um, it's getting that because all of that is trapped where those, right, this. It, it could be a contract position, but an employee not necessarily, could be a contract position, but not necessarily a company that they know idea of what your term, more term.
I see there is a communication still a problem. Are we working on this? Okay. So the better communication plan, the more efficient.
Yeah. So the communication part, um, is something that, um, with Suan and digital ubiquity over the next couple of weeks. So putting more of a concrete plan together on how we communicate. Do the public, one of the things we'll show here in a little bit is the video. That's kind of the first step. And then a number of other items, uh, kind of plan, uh, kind of messaging with the website updates, things like that. Um, and, uh, one of the other things that you will notice in the I just, that I sent out to you, that was on basically the last page, should we, uh, this portal, which I kind of showed you a couple of months ago and then they went back and revamped it. So this will go live hopefully this week. Um, so this is every property in the municipality. It actually has a, uh, tag to it, um, the type of service that they will get and the expected date that they will give it. So in this case, this is, uh, a property in kind of Alliance Brook area. So, uh, so residential service, so one gigabit, up to one gigabit service. So yes, so that's fiber. Uh, but they also have under the rapid deployment network, uh, fifty megabits per second. So they can actually also get wireless. So they will, that particular property would have a choice, right? So that'll be accessible for everyone and it'll actually be a link on our website. You can just type those civic address and it'll bring that out.
So many years ago, we were interested in this thing.
Yeah, uh, he, uh, would have had it tonight, but he was, he had about a one percent error rate in it. And he wasn't comfortable giving it with a one percent error rate, um, type thing. So he wants it. Perfect. Right? So, but that's the general theme of what we will have.
And just finally, as you know, I had problems with Chicago and my way this week. I know you're explaining a lot of shit and I don't find it wrong. If you have anything to do with it, then I'll come and give you one of the private ones. At least identify yourself, something you have in common.
Yeah. So we have a company, uh, doing a survey right now, um, and it's to help with the future make ready. So they're going to basically, uh, a drive-through survey, uh, again. So it's basically polls, uh, collecting all data. But what's on the poll, whether it's health, com, electrical, um, type thing. So they, uh, apparently on the weekend they went on several private roads. Cause I think more than one, uh, in place, they're supposed to be focused on the public roads. Um, and, uh, they do have a letter that they're supposed to, if they're approached or anything, let's give a letter that just explains project. So apparently that didn't happen either. So, um, I did have that conversation with, uh, Matt Lemay this morning and Matt went back to Chicago and basically said, well, that you have to do what's the status, right? Um, I think so. Uh, but it's really just doing a poll survey for us. Uh, yeah. The end goal, um, is that all that information is basically tabulated for us. And in future phases, it'll make the make ready process, um, that much more efficient, uh, is the hope that we'll be able to cut, um, significantly times off the make ready process.
I just heard there was a nomination to take into account people's homes and buildings and all that sort of thing. It would just be the.
It should be, it should be the wires. This is what it should be doing. It's just capturing holes, right? Should be capturing, but the data is not to be shared with anyone either. So it's not like they're, they're collecting it. And one of the concerns was that they'll sell it to Google type thing, right? That's not, it's our data. So it's, it's only for planning purposes. It's not.
It's just that they were telephoned and we're working on this to the problem. So there's a concern that you're.
I think it's, it's, it's a three sixty camera. So it takes basically everything that's within the periphery of the cameras, right? So, but it's not for any other purpose and polls are that.
Thank you.
Also, please, sir. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just wanted a little bit more information about this area, but dark fiber, that was favored to, uh, not, uh, at least for all that saves some money, like the money available for getting fiber tomorrow. My question is, but two actually, um, the, will this delay or impact the delivery of fiber to the Salt Spring, Montom area?
No, because the fiber that was going over the mountain was fat foam fiber. So it's not distribution. It's, it's purely fat foam fiber. So the build out on future phases is not incumbent on that. Because we have the, the service from Rogers, we have the, the pack over the mountain through Rogers, right? So the distribution fiber that will be put out through the county, um, will proceed because you have the, in essence, we have the three point of presence or pops are, are in the town. So we'll have one here. Uh, we will have one at the town hall in New Glasgow. And the third pop is being built to Roger site in Mount William. So you feed from your pops, your distribution fiber. So it won't impact the distribution to residential at all. It's like two different types of fiber.
My other concern is it's supposed to be a tower, uh, what is it called, a power. Uh, it's problem with my common level there is it's very, it's very hidden. Uh, so it's very much hit and miss. People actually deserve that tower. It's unlimited because you're down in a deep valley. You don't, you don't get the, uh, line of sight or any of those tools for the, uh, the wireless. I mean, it's negative number of people who are anxiously waiting to ride with fiber. I get asked every, almost every time I'm on hold, what's that coming, coming? Getting anxious, I just will be on that. Thank you.
See, also, um, Mr. Chair, on page three, um, gross profit, gross profit from the operation of the household is currently in negotiations and needs to be tracked compared to market conditions from East Link P P I A while they're running the right amount of revenue for candidate F M H success. What does that mean?
So that's the basic, uh, tariff that the internet service providers will pay us to operate on our network. So we can't establish the tariff in essence at too high of a rate that doesn't allow the internet service provider to be competitive with other, uh, players that are in the market.
What's T P I A?
T P I A is the, um, it's a tariff internet pricing. Uh, it's something like that. And it's basically what East Link, East Link have, um, and Bell. What they have is like if, uh, your purple cows and them, you're probably going to operate on their networks. That's what the T P. It's, it's the contract to allow them to operate on the network.
So they're getting theirs significantly used. Um, tariff from East Link is to stop them back to consumer at fifty, ten dollars a month.
Yeah. So a typical East Link under the, uh, I, I, I think the C R T C has, uh, changed some of this in recent months, but, um, in essence, Jeff, I, I mean, in, in East Link, um, or somebody goes to the East Link, they basically buy the service from East Link for thirty-five dollars a month, right? And then sell it for generally a hundred percent markup, some are selling it for less, right? Where the East Links of the world are at the point, right? So, uh, but that's regulated. That's what C R T C set.
But we're not.
But we're not, we're a non-dominant carrier. So we do not call it under the tariff agreement. So we set our tariff.
But that being the case, so you were, when we originally did their projections, we were at like sixty to sixty-four dollars a month.
And that's where we still are on the fiber side for sure. And, uh, the wireless side, we're probably still at the forty-five, forty-nine, right?
So we're not going to be, we're not going to, um, try or I guess come as a user, they're not going to be, um, trying to go like that fifty, ten dollar a month per cow or whatever, maybe even citywide or whatever.
Nobody is selling fiber for fifty dollar a month.
But just a general internet hookup, which is what most people being this county. Not, we're not going to sell.
Or a, a one.
We're not in that market.
No, we probably are. Um, because a, a typical one fifty, you have to remember what purple cow number selling right now is not high speed internet. They're selling D S L service, right? That's what they're selling. So they're not selling high speed. They're technically selling high speed because it, it's, uh, meets a definition, but it doesn't meet the C R T C standard. So they're not selling a fiber product. They're selling a old coaxial or copper service, you know, right? They probably have a little better service than anybody that's with them. And it's just because the network jitter isn't there because when you're with a carrier, you have all their network and all the data and the jitter and all the noise that comes with it. Everybody being on network where when you switch to a purple cow and stuff, you just have basically whoever they end up going through their equipment, right? So it, it tends to be a little better, but at the end of the day, it's old technology. They're, they're solid because they're using the exact same infrastructure that the East Links of the world have.
So we got a couple more. So we got a couple more questions, Mr. Chair. Just on the market conditions, Rogers purchased Seaside Communication, the meeting is trying to discuss and O P C activities and a potential dependency on the infrastructure by Seaside. What does that mean?
Um, so basically what the play is, uh, being discussed here is Rogers in the last month did announce that they bought Seaside. Um, and the discussions that are currently underway is that Rogers are looking at potentially coming on our network as an internet service provider. Whether it's under the Seaside brand or under the Rogers brand, will be determined. But they are, uh, the comments that have been made are, we've got the attention of Rogers. They like what we're doing. It gives them the ability to move into an area that they're currently applying. Um, and so there's some positive discussions happening around that.
And, and the county should have discussion with neighboring counties, like Westchester, Carmel, for example, to ship all troops upon instance into the ministry. What's that mean?
Uh, just because there is adjoining municipalities are doing stuff differently. Um, and just to basically have the conversations to see where there could be mutual, uh, areas to partner, uh, type thing. So, um, our fiber deployment, uh, will go in multiple directions, right? So there's a lot of opportunity to help.
And in Sanloaf Services, how else can that place be discussed? But still, any ongoing or any lab or storage services shouldn't be needed without all one place to launch.
In essence, it's basically to say, no, we've said we want to give a hundred percent coverage, right? For all our residents. And Captain Dave Carter just said like there are terrain changes, uh, from community to community. And this would be, I hope, is that, you know, uh, that the wireless doesn't meet because wireless is line sight or whatever. So one of the tools that, uh, you know, at the end of the day, it might be, you know, there might have to be a whole or two that has a satellite service, right? So trying to ensure that we can meet that hundred percent, uh, pickup. Now, Tel-Sat is not a viable option in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, right? They're probably, probably your type.
They have similar technologies to like, uh, Starlink, whenever this is, look satellite.
I think so, yeah.
And, and Starlink's come, coming out of the beta, um, stage there. Low route to, to the blood there.
Right.
Um, this map here. Whatever.
It's not that.
It's just like. Uh, what does this mean? Like in my area, I got, is there a C B C tower in Sunnyvale? And where's the tower meter? I knew there'd be that.
Is the other one? I couldn't find it there.
The other one not where they don't want?
Um, no, I think that's too far, right?
Yeah, uh. Maybe that would be the urea one.
Yeah, urea zero one. So that map is just to basically show you, um, how the towers interconnect and kind of, uh, shows somewhat of a coverage, um.
So is this, is this the tower in this rapid one phase? Is this what we're getting?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's what we're getting. And something to change. Yeah, just one more question. This whole matter, I would think, this was suggested by, by our consultants to go down. But we didn't, we didn't start doing that fire. It's like, no, there was no market for it, which we, it's concerning to him that there. picking up, yeah. Rainbows and all kinds of different things to, to figure out where, where the, where the money was in. I heard long before, which this, like, like, so we don't need this, it's a waste of money. No more, no, we're no local, um, takers, no looks. So I just have a concern that our planning of this will go well, nicely. Thank you.
Okay, also, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Just one quick question. Uh, because of the political circumstance in Nova Scotia has changed. Uh, I guess it's a, it's a question of funding. Is there any value in revisiting our, uh, our pursuit of money from provincial government, whether it be through develop of Scotia or any other, uh, any other means? Uh, we have a premier, two cabinet ministers now from Hickok County. So I'm just wondering whether pursuit of funding from the provincial government should be getting it.
I think the board has had that initial, uh, overturned to the premier. And, uh, maybe it will be forthcoming, I'm sure at some point.
It's been asked over there, obviously very busy right now. The meeting ended on the premier, certainly knows its request. We weren't created right before, and it was stable. And, uh, he knows that he sat very good this year. So the board sits down, uh, on the last meeting that we had with develop of Scotia. Certainly challenged, uh, the, uh, lady in charge of the government of Scotia on many issues. And, uh, now it's, you know, certainly let me know on different occasions that they would come over. Uh, what we're doing here, you tell them perhaps a lot of us, so. I actually waited here, uh, from, uh, from him and the, and so the deployment, they said, you know.
Then also the door.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Andy just brought up there a moment ago about the concerns that we had a month ago or six weeks ago about that tower. The river dropped, they were supposed to interfere with the greater area from there. And that brought it up as well since that. So we're wondering if we have the time that we can go back to the, the primary column. We sent a message that we didn't want it there. How's that, are we getting that straight?
We met with them on Thursday of last week. Um, and their opposition is not to the tower. They don't oppose.
Well, their, their opposition, our document meeting was where it was going to.
Where it was going to go. So they've actually, they have seven hundred acres of land there and have, uh, basically said if it went here, uh, there'd be no, it's more of a projection. So, yeah, well, because mine's worth three, uh, which still a problem. But it's, uh, it's, it's basically being worked through.
But they're concerned, as you know, when we're talking to them and all this stuff, I thought I would have heard something about that. Because they were quite concerned, very concerned of all electronics and air flights, right? What would happen, but.
Yeah, their, their concern is around, uh, uh, they had some issues, which things that they've done on their property uh, and interference and stuff like that. So, um, our power would be on a completely, uh, that we're currently insisting on that, okay? So.
Is it done, Bill?
No, uh, basically we need to reevaluate. They suggested where the power, they would like to see the power go. So we have to basically do the technical side of it, um, to see if it works there. If it doesn't work there, then that tower may be, we may walk away from that location, right? But they're, they're not opposed to.
I really don't remember. Yeah, I guess it was Wednesday night that I seen. This is a career show. Yeah.
Yeah, so we met with, uh, I guess it'd be for Sonon on Thursday. And he doesn't have any issues with what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, Warren Harper. Thank you, Mr. Chair, very good question. They, uh, there wasn't answer to some, you know, that, uh, uh, President Ian mentioned about salt springs, uh, you know, and, uh, there's a lot of hills and valleys. You can do a bit of that in many of our facilities. Uh, so our, uh, aerial, uh, proposal is, uh, wireless up order of work, um, in TV white space, uh, which is supposed to work better than, uh, I forget what you call it, L T E.
E, L T E.
L T E. So in terms of reaching, uh, homes through obstacles, but is that, would that help in those areas? Is that more to trees?
No, it's, it's, it's terrain.
They're gonna reach through, they're down in the dip, uh, and reach through that, that more than the other system. That's what I thought that that would, uh, depending on some of our property, that it could be off some problem. The other one was, uh, I wonder, I read there, it ran very down with the, uh, there is permits for twenty twenty-two need to be filed before the end of September twenty twenty-one. It's only what we've been up, avoiding issues with next year's progress. The plan is currently being evaluated for rapid flying, uh, to make, you say, you have the name ready up in December. So this is for the next phase, is this for how to move or?
It would be for future basis.
For future basis, so that was application for the make ready to have begin within this month.
Um, I would say stay tuned on that. Um, there's discussions going on with, um, both Nova Scotia Power and VEL um, about a change to the make-ready process. Um, they, like, both, they had both companies admit that it's an inefficient way of doing it.
In that area.
So they're talking with, uh, digital equity at this point by doing a pilot project. Um, here, uh, which would in essence give like right now, the, the processes you probably don't make ready, they do the evaluation, they hire the contractors and do all the work. Um, the discussions that are going on right now is to flip that process that would give the builder the ability to actually schedule the work. And then basically sub off on it at the end. So that's in discussion. So it's basically will cut months off the process.
I just want to see this moving out, uh, you know, there's a lot of people that aren't in phase one or aren't in the, or you haven't adjusted the, you know, they're actually not going to win the election, but I think, well, so we, I just want to see this missed, uh, you know, date and then, uh, be going by didn't get it.
They're ready to go. Uh, it's, it's.
As far as we're on top of it, if they do a more revision, that'd be great. Because that's what the rock enters, or they're, I said, you months and months and months, that they hold up this sort of, you know, make ready. Uh, we're finally getting almost there, but the better way to do it, we're doing that.
It basically follows through one person.
Okay.
They, the map that Captain Turner pointed out, uh, on the make-ready, we've actually given Nova Scotia Power and VEL access to our portal because that is an official way of tracking all the applications. And they were basically using, uh, paper and an Excel spreadsheet to track. Type thing, so, uh, so we're trying to help ourselves and help the.
Uh, if you're sorry, if you go, there's no, that, I do. Is there anybody else? Who, none? I have a couple of questions, but I had one and then a couple others came up through the discussion. So I noticed there's an extension to rapid on, so first thirty first one, it's a twenty one, twenty two, again. Is that, uh, that came down from the federal government, that they're, they're setting another deadline?
It, it has, um, the federal government, uh, works, uh, um, in unique ways, I guess. Um, so they, they have extended the deadline to end of fiscal. Um, we actually still do not have our calling contract that was announced in April. Um, so it's gone through pretty much probably a hundred iterations type thing. And, um, when I talked to Matt Lemay this morning, he said, any questions from I said, we're turned around within twenty-four hours. So if they ask a question, we turn our response around in twenty-four hours. It takes about three weeks after the response goes in before you get sign off on their side. So they've extended the deadline because they're not able to process things in a timely manner, so.
Okay, so, so let's, let's go, let's go.
It gives us more time. I think our target is still.
Well, also we're getting foundations in.
Exactly, our greenhouse is to have every foundation for before freezing.
Also, the report said, our, our D N, more sites need to be scaled. Is that more sites that are advertised on the paper or is that the insights of the problem?
It's combination of both. So some of the sites that we've just gone through, the public consultation ended on Friday. There's probably one, one site we're going to walk away from. Um, because we've just received so much negative comment around blocking G D to help effects of five G and everything. Um, so we're probably going to walk away from Thorburn Power, uh, which interesting enough, we don't have five G equipment on it. Uh, because it's a micro one. Uh, but anyways, the, at the end of the day, there's enough concern there that we can work around it anyway. Um, so there's a few other co-location sites that they're looking at and working on as well.
So they'll have to advertise again?
Well, when you have co-location, we don't have to advertise because the tower's already been approved, right? So like there are, in the case of them agreeing a firm, because we, if we move it fifty feet, you change the footprint of who you may have consulted with, right? So you have to go back through the first step, right? So any change you make, you have to reconsult. So at the end of the day, we're probably going to do public consultation on twenty-two sites and we'll end up with kind of eleven towers.
And our, our goal was nine towers, was it, or is it eleven?
It depends on how many we get positive because like the, losing the Thorburn one, the Thorburn one was a jump to the other ones from, right? So by losing that, we've got to go a different direction, right? So, um, but the goal is between nine and eleven.
Okay. Another thing that's grown up here and also one that's grown up a little, going down, they're stoking for futures, future, uh, base, right? So it's open the holes and seeing what's on and off. You're not paying one point six three dollars for an engineer consulting, sure to pick that up or what do we date of what's next?
Yeah, so we're reconfirming some of the data that we have, right?
So it's, it's not, we're not rebuilding the whole engineering study.
No, we're just confirming to make the make-ready process more efficient or quickly follow.
Do we have our hands on that engineering study? Because we don't go through rock, we go through, you know, the process, the way you were saying for future basis. Is that engineering study, you know, we carry it over to that?
Yeah, so digitally big would you have all the necessary stuff for future bases?
And the other thing that was mentioned here, it was the tariff, right? It's set by CRTC, right?
It's set by the CRTC for carriers, but not for non-dominant carriers. So we will say, if you want to operate on our network, you have to pay X. That's not regulated by CRTC.
Oh, that's not regulated by CRTC?
For non-dominant carrier.
So we can put anything in price, because I thought one time we were talking sixty, seven dollars or something.
Yeah, so sixty, our original law. Yeah, so sixty, our original model was sixty-two, fifty or whatever it was. So we will have a tariff for, that'll probably be sixty-two fifty, uh, which would be for your uh, probably a three hundred megabit per second service. Um, and then we will probably have a tariff that is in the uh seventy or eighty dollar range, which is for gigabit service, right? So or uh, the more people get, the more they're gonna pay.
Power speed. Okay, that was one of the questions. So we don't see videos, so.
Sure.
Sounds great. Okay.
How was it?
We're looking at starting to gather that. I think the council, only the local people, are the areas we love to watch things, things. Where for internet, lack internet, selling is sort of a lack for a regular circle of people. That would seem to be the number one priority. So now looking back to the table, that's the matter of the city and then we do something about there's been a lot of behind the scenes work with the baby link. And uh, it's just progressed to the point where we're finally getting everybody first on five dollar calls and get the project off the ground and get people connected. Most people are gonna think of us to be now that one being able to use it for their homes or downloading their, their children's homework now, which is something that is more watching a movie or a video or something like that. And that's all great. And that's what you want more, more value to you. Uh, but there is an opportunity there with this project or more than this. Be better digital information for companies, uh, for healthcare, for public safety. Uh, so just make us again, a better place to be, a better place to do business and a better place to play. So we're gonna build it like be like say like a whole highway. We're gonna build the highway, we're gonna build infrastructure, we're gonna put five hundred on the whole for hours. Um, we're gonna do all the work and then we're going to come around and lease it to companies that I'm in that service to you.
It's being funded by this municipality, County of Vico, with some assistance from the federal government and we're still uh very optimistic that we're gonna get more federal assistance uh, our agency, John Gray, who are closely with us and we're hoping to get some more federal assistance to return on the line. So if you pay this thirty, thirty-five, you're gonna pay it back instead of twenty or twenty-five, and then that's what it's pay. But it will pay itself back in the long run and eventually that will be another major. So our county will have a, a stream of income that helps you tax it down to help provide more services in our county. So this has a long-term positive component to it. We're gonna be in control as a county, gonna be in control of the type of service we have, quality service we have and to encourage it every resident. I should mention that we started out with several qualifiers, started being with our consultants. And one was this was for everybody. Have there for everybody, not only do have there for everybody, it has to be at a reasonable price. Has to be at a price that people can afford and beyond that, it has to be followed. We don't want something that's a hidden mess. You know, you have something, you don't have something. So those are things we can control because the county own the system and operate.
Competition is good. We decided to go two words fiber, one word wireless. So that people who can get the most out of this, that's the fiber's fine, we're concerned, fiber's being, so let's give people best we can. It's kind of like going back to this whole highway analogy, there's millions of different basic models that are going to grow. And everybody has a service premium. And we might take one brand, but that would be in funding another brand. And we're part of that in the digital as well.
This is on the computer. So in order for us to have any chance of getting business set up, we do have a lot of people interested. And you know, great departments and fishing and everything is, every field of work, uh, computers are gonna become part of that. So it's for residents, it's for business, and it's also for our tourism, it's free. And that's why I was saying that people are coming from places where they're used to the service and they will expect that service. So if everybody expects to have the strong horses and the viewers we have, or to continue that, we have to have what these will have in other areas, but otherwise, and, and part of that comes down too, is not just tourism, it's tracking some people who move here. Um, I know people in the red stage, they perhaps was, well, what's the why they're here like there? And it's not good. But it's a setup for a lot of fun. So we want to have. And so in the urban areas of Vico County, they have a good atmosphere. So we're going to compete and have people settle in our uh area in the rural areas of Vico County. We need to have that people service. I think you uh.
We can ask a lot, why does Vico County need this? Why it's important? It's important because we want to grow and empower. And how does I see anybody do that part? How isn't it though, of course? It's going to expand our tax base and more people move into the area. It can be for people to educate themselves through halls, be entertained, more to the hall. It's not gonna be that restriction anymore where you say, oh, I can't because I live in a rural area. So it would be, yeah, sure, let's do it. And then it's all possible to start thinking.
Very good. Did you get any comments from your name with that?
Well, one of the people on that was talking about the traffic. That wasn't her.
Yeah, okay. Councilor Turner.
Thank you, Chair. So what uh, what was the, what's the aim of this? What is, who was our audience? What is, what is the, of our?
So I, I guess our theme here is our residence, but it's more baseline education as to why.
How do we drive people to watch?
Uh, so we will be doing uh, uh, a release, I guess, uh, the next day or two, um, to drive people to it, uh, that well, so.
Mail campaign, there's sort of paper campaign, there's electronics, radio.
Yeah, I think this is why we were talking uh, using social media as our, our first go around. Um, Suzanne, you can jump in if you have any others.
Um, yeah, I think we have to talk to Matt like this, like um, Councilor One had brought up communications as well. And uh, that's something that this is the first step, but I could see this using as a marketing tool if we ever host um, public sessions, open houses, that type of thing in the future. We needed to promote this type of thing. Um, but we'll definitely start with our own sites, websites, social media, uh, do some kind of release around it. The goal was just to get people familiar, people are familiar with it, but I'm, from the emails that I still receive, I'm still not a hundred percent sure that everybody understands it. So we just wanted to do that as simple as possible in a way that was uh, viewer friendly, easy to listen to and maybe have it click in one more time. And uh, it's something that we think we can promote over and over again. And if something does need to be changed, like Sean Fraser doesn't get in tonight and the warden mentioned him, just saying, then we can, Danny's more than happy to come back and change the parts out and stuff like that. So.
So if I live in LA and I wanna get high-speed internet, right, and I go heavier that there, how do I watch this? How do I have to move? So there's a whole, there's a whole constituency out there that don't have access to watch this. That's who you try to reach. So, you know, I, what other methodologies do we have to, to promote this? You know, it's not everybody has social media. You know, my, my mother-in-law's in there, she lives there, probably share on social media.
Does she have, does she have access to a computer?
Uh, no, no. But she has, but she wants high-speed internet.
Right.
Wants it. So I, 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 this, this is just an open-ended question. I don't need all the answers tonight. But I just think it has to be thought through uh more completely.
And I, and I agree. Um, we're gonna put some something in our own news and views, obviously an update that's coming out in October. Um, but it, we were doing a lot of, um, we're, when we were working with Rock early on in the project, we were doing some mailouts and talking about things like that and updates through that way. And then we kind of pulled back when we were getting into delays. So that's something that we probably have to discuss with Matt now that we're dealing with him and see if uh, I think that's not a bad idea. Just some simple cards, you know, you get in the mail, those type of things, um, reaching those people.
And we, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, in regard to the video, there's not really much we can do about that. If you don't have internet, then I can't help you.
Uh, so we approach any marketing companies, have we gone to, you know, any marketing companies? That's what they specialize in. How to, how to touch
Yeah.
your audience. Have we, have we reached out any? Digital equity doesn't seem to be the marketing company, it seems to be a technology company. Would we talk to any specialists about this and?
Not that, not, not that I'm aware of. Um, I'm not sure Brian knows of anything. We've just been kind of keeping it low-key a little bit because we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves and I think the council had said something about in the past about offering and not really having the ability to offer anything at the moment, and that was kind of confusing people. So, um, that's something prob, probably Brian and I are gonna have to discuss about here in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor One.
Thank you, Mr. Peter. I guess touched on the projects from the make. Seems that the audience we're trying to work with this video is, the audience doesn't have internet, so I, of course, I will probably get the message out to people from this video. Like I said, there's still a lot of controls on this, but it's just finding that using social media and people are never accessing the internet, put one of them excuse us. But those tests, you, you're gonna be able to.
Okay. More than her.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that is my address as well is that the, the audience that we really need to hear this about is the ones that can't be preached. And that's why we built the project in the first place. Uh, so we need to, when I agree with the very uh, maybe uh, we need to get some uh, private firms or whatever to help us with the ways of uh, of doing this and uh, just a suggestion, uh, you know, we do have, I think because we're doing the project and it's a key in this province, that the municipality is going to operate its own uh, internet system, uh, or company or whatever I call it, uh, that, that to me is a new story. And I think we need to be going after, we need somebody to control this to an audience that isn't on high-speed internet or a computer. And that, the love for our TV. And if we've been uh, set up as a, as a news story, not as a pay, I've had it, but it's a news story and I think there would be some interest in the news story. Uh, then that's the way that we can get this on, on the front of TV screen, which reaches pretty well everywhere. Yeah. So uh, there is East Link, there are TV, I don't know if they'd be making it to promote it better, but then the uh, uh, but I, I think Suzanne's very capable of looking into that. She has a lot of connections in the media room. And really, this video is something that has to be seen and heard, say, huh? And uh, outside of the uh, computer, that is TV. That's what one area we need to go after and try to find a way into that. And we really do need to promote this to people, the problem itself.
Thank you. Just on uh, maybe something probably about speed then. Let's, let's go. The uh, the other thing that is not mentioned is, I, I don't think we should give a patent results because we start rolling this too soon before it stops running. People are like, oh, when's come, when's come, when's come? I think this phase or phase one or ring eight gets up and running, that's the time to, to watch something to say, here's our, this is our first phase, moving on to this next phase. You're interested, the, I, I don't think we should be up there too, too quick. Right, so.
And I answered right there.
Yeah. And not cheating.
And I think that's the thing. This is just one tool that will come up over the next number of months. So this is kind of a educational piece as to why we're doing it, right? And as we get closer to operations, our plan is gonna change. Our intent, how we connect to people will change. So the meat, this is simply one medium. And it's a visual one. Unfortunately, it's digital. Uh, and we can't get away from that, but it is a tool to help answer some very basic questions that people, when they come to our site, the video will.
We want a little more, more, that we all shut it down, that's all right?
This is only a short one. I just wondered with the audio quality compared to what I, Suzanne told me before. I didn't think that. Is that just through the system here tonight or?
I'd say that's poor internet, yeah.
That's fitting, I guess.
Yeah.
But no, I, what I heard before, I didn't hear that, that they could interrupt the.
No, it, it's simply the, the system here.
Okay.
They think so. It's what I, you did, too, that was clear.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, when we move on, everything all right? Good. Moving back to the bylaw enforcement officer's report and some filings on the online there, uh, we had a question from uh, Councilor One, I think it was sixteen virtual lane was that Councilor? She was just wanting uh, update about this. Well, then if we could all prepare on that.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, which property was that again? I'm sorry.
It was sixteen virtual lane, Victor Lamy. She was just wondering if you have an update about.
Uh, I can get an update from Ann. Ann's back in tomorrow and uh, I'll get back to you ASAP on that one.
Okay. That's, that's great. Thank you, Robin. Okay. So we'll move on. Next on the agenda is the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three cross share eight. Thing package there. It's all stars. You're in the chair. No, no, nobody else, look at Hannah. I, I think that uh, the liberal law should be put on this list as it was there last year. And for some reason, the government didn't uh, wanna fund it. But I also have two other roles in the area in, with the drive of Greenwood Street, the old role of Thorburn. Both of them are in really bad shape. But really use uh, use the pay, the uh, the one in Greenwood Street was uh, beat to death by trucks on the highway projects. It's about now that they opened up their pit down and down off the, I mean, twin section, the truck truck is, is, is gone. And that's this, which is good news. Anyway, those are the three streets that are in this and that I would like to see on this list. Anybody else have any? You know, I think it's been a growth as a, or, or.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm not asking, this one is put on my list right now, it's a depression I have, it's been, there are a lot of concerns. Rock over, tell me about Corso Drive and South West River. Uh, the whole listing above it says three house listing policy. Uh, I think that means you have to get at least three houses on that road. Then Corso Drive is under subdivision. What's the difference between three house living and subdivision?
Just the manner in which they were created. Uh, the prophet said one time had a rule, he had three houses on the driveway, they took it over. Uh, the province that went fine had a rule, it had three houses on the driveway, they took it over. That's what the free pattern listing is that, and many of those roads are simply. Driveways, uh, no way to do them at all, so the Corso Drive one would have been created through a subdivision by.
Well, as a subdivision plan, I think it was only ever one drug, started out, over twenty years. While there was only one house, they had no idea, it's a state. Uh, there's a next right down to number four, came into trouble and praised it, uh. I, I would have trouble asking where to be paid if it only had one house and it cost sixty-six thousand dollars. And the same for those people in that one house, but I did wonder why, you know. That the, 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 perhaps to be, uh, to be considered for this, but it, it is a. A gravel road now, uh, which all kinds of problems, but the post was almost like, people won't do a lot of work there, so I think they're probably satisfied for now. I just couldn't understand the difference. Uh, but what I said was a subdivision, it's a, it was a, it was lots, I guess. But I'm not asking where to put on the list, so if you didn't want to get it, one. Also, um.
So. This list here, any of these roads would be considered for dating or, or some type of treatment, is that correct?
Another one on this list, in theory, yes, but no, but basically the department. Basically will say which roads are our roads on here, which we have applied for in the past, but the department said no, we're not touching them.
Yeah, I, I, they all saying, I'm youngest in the family, so if you don't ask, you don't get, see? So, I got a, I got a road line district. So on this list is the Village Street, Park Lane, and. And it's, nothing but a head, it needs work. It seems that no way it's like, we want to touch it, like to put that forward, get some attention, if that's possible. But if you don't ask, you don't get. It's point three of a calendar and the estimate on here is fifty-two thousand dollars, I hope that number stands for. That's the last story. Done here.
Councilor One.
Do you have any other much, or estimates, or why are we estimating that yet? Do you have any, any other figure? So, just maybe one point of what we're looking at.
So whatever you, basically the rule is, whatever you submit. Um. You should be prepared to fund if they give it to you.
That's what I'm asking you, we can't, many times, I'd like to be placed.
So the numbers that would be there are estimates, so, um. So if you put even the new row and then you add a blacky row below and you're up to, what, uh? Two hundred and thirty-two thousand, so that's, that's your, uh, potential, uh, costs.
You haven't seen any of that, yeah, but you get, that's why we're considering.
And this isn't for this year, this is for next year, right?
It's not a fifty, fifty cent dollar.
It's fifty cent dollar, yeah.
So, uh, yeah. No, we can't, I think we did it by, we did seventeen rolls by, uh, two thousand four. So, did we?
We did in two thousand and fourteen, um. The one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I think it's the roads.
No, we, we definitely gotta look at the initial of the roads too, and Ann, I think that's where engineer will come into play, the. Get the initial ground to see if the road meets the criteria that, that should be. Councilor Hall.
I remember computers like that, like this, it brought up a, a video of the sign up. Of, uh, you know, the. Called, again, he wrote the same thing, that if it's the green sign, it's a provincial road. If it's a blue sign, it's J class, if it's a white sign, it's private. And I know, but the hillside road is green road and, uh, other roads.
Blue is the municipal, yes, not J class. J class roads are progress roads, the green signs.
So all, all the, the, uh, aged ones are really, they have something to that.
These are all green signs.
Yeah, so they're, we're, we putting for the payment or they programming that?
We, we put in, they're J, J class roads are the cost share between municipality and the province.
The green is their, their move.
The green, green, the blue ones are the municipality roads, which is, comes through this council, that's nothing to do with the province. It's like, the subdivision comes to you and asks you for then, for us to take it over, it has to be certain criteria, it meets that criteria. Then the spout takes over, the province does not look after it, it's not after about this spout.
Yes, it's sort of, I guess, excuse me on this, I'm just confused by, it's okay, pay our road, it's oil's road, it's green road, it's green sign.
Yeah, it's probably.
Where, where, like, where's the provincial road or?
Provincial, yeah.
And now, so, any work can be done in that, has to be cost shared by the list?
No.
No, that's, that might be great.
Only the roads in here is J class, J class is a cost share, these are the cost share roads that we have in the province. I don't think oil's road is on this one.
No, but the hillside road, it, it's, is, is, uh, I, I went to green sign.
Yeah, it's a J class road.
It's a J by road.
All by the province. But cost share between the spouting and the, and the province, very worked out. It was agreement, the exchange of service back in nineteen ninety-five, where the province took over the social services end of it. At one time, social service used to be held after five, the spout. So, instead of that, the province took that over in, in exchange, they came up with, I think. Four to the road trial and forty to the plumber's road. Yeah, and, uh, we paid, we paid seven, eight thousand dollars each year per plumber. So the province maintained those roads such as, uh, and things like that, but even worth it, it's done on these roads. It's cost share between the spouting and, and the province. But before the province, province, province is upon saying, they're not paying the, uh, that's, that's like, so we sent our, uh. Our list of roads to the province, they could come out and say, no, no, who knows, they'll do that.
It's, I guess, the only confusion I have, that, that I, I, you know, probably understand where you're coming from, but. But the hillside road. It's there longer than sort of the oil's road, yet it's the J class roads, right? It's sort of confusing me there, I guess.
Yeah, it's a J class road, that's the problem, so the province submitted that list, the spout, that these are the roads that we picked on them. Or that, that are J class, will make J class, and then any work that would be done on them will be cost shared. And it was just something, it was mostly village areas like hillside, the one with the reekas. Hold well, hit some, and, and I wasn't changing service, so that's, that's all that. It's basically. Councilor David, do you have any?
Yeah, I did, I want them to submit that every J class road in District Seven should be included on this list. That's zero.
Yeah. Okay.
I guess my point is that when we look at the penalties, they're not always, and it was supposed to equally share. Uh, because both third divisions in close to town are very different, very different fees, and say, non-sufficient minus, and you know that.
Councilor Keen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my question is for, um, Brian, what are we looking at for a budget for this? I guess this is next year's, uh. Uh, budget, going to be for years from, for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Right, see that, twenty-one, twenty-two, yeah. So we do kind of three, yes, that's true. So what kind of budget are we looking at? Is it something for like fifty thousand or a hundred thousand? What are we, what is staff recommendation or not?
It really, what, how we've done it in the past is you apply. And when they come back with the award, um, you basically at that point determine whether or not you can. Record it or not, right? So, um. The process is as well, if they provide us an estimate, um, so the numbers that are here on the list are, that's our share. So, that's, um, our fifty percent of the estimated cost, so, um.
So these numbers number value in two, again, these are the numbers for the province.
Yeah. I think so, we, we're using roughly, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand as, uh, per kilometer cost. That may be high, right, but, uh. But that's kind of the estimate, so it's really, um. What you think should be the priority, so we want them to address, right? Right? Uh, as I said, in the past, the province ultimately will decide whether or not their territory will pass in a road, or maybe roads that. For whatever reason, there's been roads in the past, they've said, no, there's right-of-way issues with it, we're not touching it, not investing it, so.
So, Mr. Chair, as you mentioned, we asked over Captain, what, uh, if we like our road and the province agrees to move forward with it. Are we helped about, or are we, we want, or we want back out?
We're like, basically, once they award, you have to send a confirmation to them that you're accepting it. And then it goes to tender, and basically, once you've accepted it. You are basically, so the hundred, say it's a hundred and ninety-one thousand, uh, you are basically committing to. Roughly two hundred and ten thousand, so they basically say, plus ten percent, they're not coming back and asking your committee to do that. Um, if it's over the ten percent threshold, then they come back to you and say, okay. Budget is a hundred and ninety thousand, the cost is two hundred and fifty for you, you wish to proceed. Right, so there is, there's some fail-safes built into the system.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Thor.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Uh, I remember a few years ago when I asked about the reekas. Streets in the reekas, it's been on there again, and streets in the reekas, it's chips. So. I think they had a kind of an excuse, they weren't gonna do that anymore, or something like that, do you remember that, Brian? So, I, I'm concerned about two streets, uh, the second street, actually, but, uh. We're, we're going to stay, but what, what some of it wasn't even, uh, they got rid of that, it's checked, see, but what they did was. They took a rag spell out there, they rode away, put it through the machine again, and took it back and ran it over with the grain.
Right. So that's where I kiss it.
Uh, we, we, we set the last one.
Reset.
But anyway, like, everybody's talking about the streets, like, see, Randy said about, uh, they're interested in some streets in the reekas, so. Think I'm old, should I put them on, or what, we gotta go here, I guess. Quite, quite a lot of stupid.
It's really, it's a council decision on what you wish to apply for.
I'll make the motion that the. Street of, of the ranking that was called about that got put up last year, you put on in the streets in the reekas. They don't do it, you remember that? You remember, I'm gonna ask, okay, by last, then.
Just beside, do we have a second?
Sorry.
Second, Councilor, uh, one more.
I haven't known the name of road in, in my district, I've never asked for one before, but, uh. I don't want us to go through my budget, so the best would be best for next year, but then we don't know if some of the other ones might get turned down. Yeah. And if we don't have anything else on there, uh. So I'll, I'll put mine forward as an amendment to that motion, I guess, uh, Sonic Road and, and, I think it's listed here forty-one, so it's. It's, it's a, it is big, but it's short.
Just gonna make a comment about just.
You, you redo your road, yeah, include that, because I'm just not sure whether some of the others would be accepted.
So now, for the reekas streets, hard time, and the purchase on.
But Sonic Road, I'm not.
That's why I would be, I need the second, the, the, I. Read that.
Is this far from being twoned? Are you with a straight and all road?
Uh, no, because, uh, it's way over, in the new roads, it was there the last year, right? Just on that, the J class roads last year, hundred thirty are done down in Western District. And that's done, no one's, anyway. Councilor David, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the past, we put in a whole lot, a lot of this, but we get, sort of, we overasked. And on here, twenty-fourteen, just price, but. So, at this phase, we put in more than we expect to get, and we even put in ones that maybe have been turned on in the past, like the chase or wells, or whatever. You, you keep trying, all we're doing here is trying, and then when they go back to us, then we have to make a budget. But that, right now, we're just, we're making our Christmas list.
In the past, that, in the past, they did ones on Fraser Mountain, that the trucks had to back in from the main road except. It was on reekas, but went on after that bell, we do, but, but back there one night, I'm not to forget it. I put eighty of the streets, for that.
And, and they remember what's wrong, they're not even mixed.
No, they just, they have something.
Deputy Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I have one with black at road, and I broke, only one, the next year, but if you're taking the list, it's second on.
That's fine.
They can bring the, the, move aside.
I guess we're doing, we're gonna do that, I'm gonna do that, but there's another one, primary, uh, they're playing bottom, anywhere. I mean, it's, it's, it's actually, the road's name is, 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 but on here, it's, we're on the.
I mean, it was, I haven't been, that number.
I have the church.
What number?
Uh, three ninety-two.
It's called Haggis Lane, we got a front row, it's a, it's two. The first place that.
Road near the bottom, there's seven up on the bottom.
It's a lot of house.
So, if anybody else is on, I could find out who, but eight percent.
And, and again, there is a, but we should, should never. Record other works, crime draw, just to make sure that they do meet the criteria, right? This. You know, if we're paying the roads that are in dire strength. Then, should we put them on the list?
Yeah, we can certainly review that in the Public Works Department.
Just to take a drive to see. Uh, Councilor Lewis. Councilor Lewis.
To, 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 sorry. Uh, just a quick question. One is, when we, when we get these roads done and it's sharing. Do they even run the road and just go and do a road, or, or do, uh, we have to, through council and say, okay, we'll share half of it?
Who, who's?
But the, 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 we're gonna do a road, that's.
Yeah, but, most likely you go along to the last road.
Okay, but it's, it's not like when it's done, like, the, the, the latter road has been done, it's all the gravel and everything up there. Uh, it, it's been the whole line there, and so, uh, it, it's on there, but it, it's done. And the other thing is, can you tell me about the Blantyne Road, is that past, is, is, uh. Provincial, or is it, because that is a bad road.
Yeah, but it's a provincial, but it's unmaintained for, uh, that's it. But they maintain, there's different categories of, of roads.
Well, they call me, when I call seasonal.
Seasonal, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, if it's seasonal, all summer, you could run through it, it's filled with grass, or I shouldn't, they're ready, so. Where do they, where do they give a seasonally, should be fixed up in summer, I mean. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's not a problem this year.
No, but it is one, but it was represented, okay?
Okay, so, the list of roads, we have over in sidebar. All those, they're just saying, go ahead and say nine, and, and my name, also here. Next is emergency rezilations, where is your rezilation? Okay, is there any referrals to committees, council, or local solutions?
During the first past winter when we were actually running the piece of dealing with COVID, the province came out with the sort of plan to hire long-term care assistants. And these provide, these proved to be very valuable in the workforce. So much so that they, I think we're moving on from this almost and hoping that this will continue. Now, the government has extended their life from September 30th to March 31st. However, the movement likes to work, seeing as becoming a permanent part of the staff. And there's certainly our governments, both the municipal and the national, are looking at and promising great things as far as upgrades within their facilities. And knowing that the Minister of Health is the past administrator of the Archibald Donald Home in the administration, I'm sure that this, she can well appreciate the need and the need for people in our, our fielding. So I guess my feeling is that we should do, my wish is that we should write to the Minister of Health, Mrs. Johnson, and encourage her to make these long-term care assistants permanent members of the staff in her, in her business. I'm still doing.
Okay, so move to the second. Um, where do you have to go?
I assume you have here, not that these positions, you're talking about where some care assistants are paid for by the government, any other position? And so, and how many ones in game that are at value though?
There are eighteen at value.
Okay, on schedule, eighteen. And, and what is their role compared to those people that are there for, what do they do here?
Okay, so they're certainly frontline. Uh, so it's always assistance with, with feeding or reading to some, and looking after some of their, some of their personal needs. But it just adds another layer of care and compassion in dealing with their evidence.
I, I have no idea, and this, every government said get a better job with the doctors. But they're not people, search for a better job, so I'm not pulling any of this. Do you mind if I put everything up? Okay, I'm a pro.
Any other questions? Councilor Boiles?
Yeah, just off from some of the, uh, does this job over there. I don't know, maybe change the society of focus that, uh, you've got some of them that are really good. They're fantastic. They're sitting over there helping them do. None of us don't do nothing. They just go and hide and say, they don't, they don't do the job that they should be doing. So, uh, you know, that's, that's the only question I have is, you know, yeah, the ones that are really getting in there and doing stuff, I think, yikes, if we were being, trying to keep them. The ones that are just, you know, deserve their pay, they don't, uh, they just don't want that at all.
Virtually, councilor, I think that can be said for everyone. Any other questions, comments? Okay, moving on, talk of the vote, all those people who are standing on.
Aye.
How would you want your name? Okay, next we have the rural transit solution funding. Uh, this is from the agenda by Councilor Turner and also some information that was in the package as well. So, Councilor Turner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I simply wanted to bring it to council, see if there's an appetite here for assuming this. I know that we had some conversations about, about rural transit previously and it was turned down here by this council. I, I think most of the information we had was just anecdotal and we didn't really have any real concrete data to make our, our decisions on. And from what I've been reading from this, from this funding proposal is that they're sponsoring a zero plan. It doesn't mean that we have to pursue it, but I would like to know whether there's any appetite in council to just pursue that information. And I, and I think it's particularly apropos that we do it is, from the perspective that I sit on, I'm a change committee. We're trying to come to a net zero emissions here in the county. That's, we can contribute to that by gauging in the rural internet, I think that would be a good thing. I think that's the perspective, one of the perspectives we approach this from. And the other one is just, uh, area border citizens getting to, to place twice, multiple fish, like, particularly or six, something like that. Anyway, I just want to know whether it's, it's up that we should pursue.
Thank you, Councilor Turner. Councilor Connor?
Thank you. Just on that, Brian, the thing that I, very, certainly agree, but I love the cost shared in the study that's done by Alex McCallum, I think that were years ago. We know, we did, we did in the original disability study on transit. Yeah. So we did do a study and it wasn't that long.
So you think that'll do it?
Well, her clues are that long. He's, but. You're just, you're trying to, you know, it's more reason. You know, and, and I know there's probably people that are, he's stressed a little bit, but this miss valley is going past big money to have a transit system. The governor that I won and permission to, will, I share the, the losses and things like that. So that was, it's very complex. I mean, it was spelled, I don't think there's any disvalued that it probably makes wrong, I could be wrong. You know, I did the tour, the one in Hellbass, which is pretty hard compared to what we're, my new year to Hellbass. But there moves a lot of the fish. You know, it's, but it's something that's needed when you don't learn cities such as Hellbass. But maybe we don't have to look at that study before we go, but I guess the Deloitte here is a going gate. So you don't have to make decisions here. You have?
Um, Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I talked recently with Daniel McGilroy, besides the mayor of South, and it's also the local transit efforts. He was enthusiastic, very happy, I guess, with the ridership beginning. They're pretty recently launched. Transit efforts. And first of all, I don't see there's a for-profit model, no respect for that would even ever break. It's not necessarily what I think we need to do, but as we continue to grow and much of our goal is in, is in the central core area, uh, that's just logical. I think we need to talk, and it may not happen for this year, but maybe I think we need to talk with Mr. McGilroy and take his brain, his house going there and where he would see political expansion that we might be able to help with. I'm thinking of as far as bulk mail back. I don't know what they're covering right now, Westville, Westville area. Don't know if they're doing a loop down to Westville down south or not. That's currently up in the interior valley, not going to Sunnybury, but they're very penny density population on both sides of the river there. You know, it's a thorn. And we need to look at our core areas and we need to do it sequentially. That's just all of a sudden a great big splash and it loses a half of the doors to purchase yours and pull the button after, after building. And I don't think we should necessarily be looking at a for-profit model. Thank you.
Where do you have to go?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I guess I look at this, I know the one that we, it plays now on a private district dorm, the South of the castle. The next phase was seen in Westville, print that way you can see how when and then eventually would be Victor and the county. But I see this fifty thousand dollars there as a way to do some homework ahead of time. So that when that time comes, uh, seeing how they're getting along and they're growing on, on it needs to be a counter system eventually, but this would give us insight into, you know, is it something that the public wants enough of them? Is it, what, what is the need, where is the? We have some facts and figures when the time came to say, well, we want to join or not. But that's going to be a few years down the road. But we could have some research done, uh, and hope to us, it appears, uh, for this to find out just what we need, what we, what would be useful. I do want to tag on with the Councilor Turner. I said, uh, with the, on that climate change committee, this fits right in. Everything should be done, I said, with the climate change. And this certainly fits in with that. Uh, it's difficult to say to many college students, whatever, we're going to be able to transport huge trucks there because how do you fit at the times and the frequencies and everything made it work? Uh, we, uh, but we need to look at what the demand is and whether we can provide some of that first service. And the other thing that I want to mention is how, as we look at, we're looking at right now, that's the spectrum here in this press under is a housing that they're outside of the central core. One of the challenges is traffic. And so that may start changing the need for some transit. Yes, I agree with the power, it's costs. The government, we, we gave a lot of time, a lot of funds to the wellness center too. It is something we need. But, so, you know, this is no different than that, I guess. It's just a matter of how much is the need, where is it, when is it? So I think gathering the facts for when he's not going to, it is taken care of money to period that, but gathering the facts for those fifty thousand dollars may not be the bad business.
Thank you, Councilor Parker. Councilor Boiles?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree that this is a chance for us to look at some, we just need us to sit in classes, say, we need to do the transit problems in the county. So I think this is a great opportunity to get something in place to do a study and see how this can work. I think we're, we're really missing the number of notch and we're, we're going to send them out. Because like you said, climate change and those types of things, well, this will give us a chance to get something in place, work on the power to get a, I mean, quite support for this, this, uh, possible.
So are we able, uh, administration to make, uh, ask question by the, if the vote goes, is that even feasible?
Um, we can probably. We can probably pull some of the, uh, things that we've got in two thousand and twelve. And he decided to base the, kind of write an application. There's going to be people get fifty thousand left, but it's simply an application. Probably put something in that you know, the same road, right? We can.
So what is the budget, Councilor?
Well, that's, that we apply for the funding for, uh, for planning, uh, design, project for, for some transit and power.
Okay, that's fair. So, Councilor Turner? Any other questions or comments? Very now, I'll call to the vote, all those people who are standing by the standing on.
Aye.
Councilor Roger King, motion carried. Number sixteen, AED funding program. Let's apparently ask you to speak about, I'll move it over to you.
Well, it's more for information purposes, I'm not clear. We had a program a few years ago. Two, three years ago. What's that cost there or was that just an attempt to reduce the cost by about five?
No, so it was basically, our program was that we would apply one AED per district. And we did it over a two-year period. So, uh, we basically bought the six AEDs or seven AEDs. Or there is no discount pricing, it wasn't a volume thing, it was simple.
And some would pay by the county?
Pay by the county. There were a couple districts that did some creative things and the group's cost share on it. So we were able in a few districts to get more in.
Uh, I guess then my question is to my fellow councillors, is there any appetite for maybe looking at that again in the future? Is there a fair number of halls and, or halls, venue rooms and breaks and so on? I still don't have an AED. Open that up for comment, I guess.
I think too, Councilor Parker, that many counties around the table have, have given service grants as well.
Yep.
Um, so that might be an option if you receive any applications and.
Uh, excuse me, Madam Chair, that's probably wasn't all of them. There's no program there.
Where do you have to go?
As I said, where I was going, I think it's on the service grants, because it might look funny. But we did it, I think, first round, which was very stimulating, uh, here to these to look at that and to get a start for the front, huh? But I, I, my feeling is, and I know several council chairs have on that rope now, and perhaps that's the, the right route. We can't do them all at once, but it's been sort of going in now and then under municipal service grants. But I, I think that's the way to go.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Boiles?
Yeah, I'd like to see something prepared in itself because, I mean, I wonder how, how they were airballing it. So we, uh, the one we got, a lot of super airball, which is great. I mean, it's a life-saving device and seems to sure have, uh, they had one prior to that, but they're, uh, also the city on the elements is the west thing for some time and we pick out them, we're getting on for them. They're having, I never think, that's their job, open these functions and that. And they were, they were asked to, the county picked out the most, I think so. You know, I, I'd like to see something because they did, they'd proven, people think of hurricanes and all the stuff with different, you know, different functions and send out, say, in the rain.
And seeing that, it was also a lot of the, 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 actually something happening, uh, from everyone. Good luck. Good for me. Okay, any other questions, comments? Me, I'm, or Connor?
Well, I'm not, I'm not opposed to do my, for that purpose. Very, it's very important purpose. Since before, I'll give it on the record again, I did not want to bring it up in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget year because we have a very tight budget. I did notice the, uh, the tax, uh, first five months provided the entire year of twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. But what I really want to get to is, and I think there are several councils around here that'll agree with me, that's a two hundred million thousand percent annually, uh, is not adequate in many regions. And it's time that we had a debate, uh, on, on that. Uh, just to say that, you know, as we go through this growth phase and our, our, so it's a lot of, uh, it might well be increasing the municipal service grant amount, not, not the formula of necessary. The amount, the gross amount is two fifty. My understanding now, it's, or maybe wait until the end, like, carry on ninety-four, there was, back to fifty. For a while, then two hundred, for a while, then we're back up to fifty, it's been there since. The renovations you could do in nineteen eighty-four would say a five thousand dollar grant are very, very, very different from what you do in twenty, twenty-two, five thousand dollar grant. So just making the point, unknown money, that far. And now would be a good time, not right now, not tonight, but soon, a good time to have that discussion. Because we should have significant increases in assessments over the next two years.
Is that something that we put on a future agenda, like, see more at the end of the year?
Yes, please, that should probably be on a, an absolute thing. Around my way to get there.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Right, any other questions or comments? Seeing now, we're one to national visibility awareness, light it up to a whole, to a lot of.
We had some information this week from, uh, Wolf's Works. Anyways, there are homeless and national disability awareness and early events in the land is lighted up campaign. It's a one day event taking place on October twenty-first. And what they're looking at is, uh, maybe of, uh, offices and, and sort of thing, purple and blue towers, which symbolizes disability awareness. Teamwork cooperative, learning, ability, he's working across the province, spreading awareness. And they want to see, um, different organizations, you know, simply needs about this shape apartment.
and then looking to see, um, different organizations, you know, certainly these values shape our environment.